Good evening, everybody. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Monday, August 19th. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Brief first selectmen's report. We've got a lot to cover tonight. Just wanted to briefly address the storms that we had last night. Quite frankly, we were lucky. If you've had a chance to study any of the maps or any of the storm reports statewide, just north of here, call it 30 miles up towards Newtown and places like that. The rain was so shocking that they deemed those storms a thousand-year events. In other words, you'd have to wave once every thousand years to have rain of that volume and that intensity. The destruction was pretty significant in terms of road damage, damages to residents and businesses. I was on a DEMIS call, which is the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security today, where they described some of that in detail. Fortunately, the governor has declared a disaster area for this and is working to pursue a federal declaration that would free up federal funds to help with any rebuilding for folks that suffered severe damage. So they're looking for all the towns that were in the pathway of this storm to report back on damage, particular damage that was not covered by insurance losses. So again, we didn't have too terrible a time down here. I sent around some pictures and also drove around the town and talked to a few folks today. We had flooding in a lot of the low-lying areas where you normally have it, certainly down Post Road in front of the car dealership, down on Renshaw here in front of Town Hall, and then had some additional flooding over by Tilly Pond and Lakeside, which is right there at West Avenue. And I talked to some folks there. So certainly a few residents got some water, some basements, that sort of thing. It's just a reminder that these storms can be extraordinarily dangerous. And so anytime you're coming up on high water, it is better to stop or turn around or do not drive through that. Or even if you're actually out on foot, to stay away from any high water or fast-moving water. There were some fatalities associated with the storm, and it's real unfortunate that folks like that got caught up. So please be careful. If you have any particular questions about any of this, you're welcome to give me a call. But that's my update on yesterday's storm. By the way, we are still getting some weather tonight. There are a few storms moving through. Doesn't look like it's anywhere near as severe as it was last night. But please stay safe. And following days, it looks like we'll have some pretty good weather, so that's some good news. Anybody on the board have any questions? Okay, all right, Kate.
Not really much to update. We have a tentative agreement with the Town Hall Union, and we are still in negotiations with Dispatch. And basically, I'm spending a lot of time prepping to leave, prepping other people for handling the duties, et cetera.
Yeah. Just on that point, we are going to appoint both Jennifer Charneski and Susan Barksdale as our interim town administrators. We have a meeting with them tomorrow to go through the sort of task carries that each one of them would be individually responsible for covering. A few of those things will be on my list. But I feel like we're well organized to do that or begin that type of transition so that when Kate leaves on the 19th, we will be well-covered. So more to come on that. Anything else, Kate?
No.
Okay, Board Liaison Reports, Marcy.
No update as of tonight. We haven't met since our last meeting, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, Sarah, anything from you?
We met briefly as a committee on August 7th, and we approved the May and June pay-ups. But we'll be meeting as a larger group on Wednesday, the 21st, this coming Wednesday, to go over our updates and progress. I don't know if anyone's been driving by or seen the schools. In particular, as a past Henley parent, it was exciting to see the new exit and entrance, rather, exit onto Post Road to allow traffic. So a new traffic pattern is already, they've already put the new sidewalk up, and so it's exciting. So we also had a groundbreaking last week, and that was really nice. John, thank you for coming and speaking. And there were some lovely words spoken about David Martin. So it's exciting to see the changes happen. I think everyone is excited. We did have some water hit last night, some of the sites. So we'll have to see what kind of cleanup we need to do. I know one of the neighbors is not happy with some of the runoff, but that water, it was an incredible amount, so.
Yeah, it was exciting to celebrate David's legacy and the wonderful person he was, but also to celebrate all the hard work that continues and to have the construction team, architects, officials from the committee, and most importantly, some kids who were not on vacation otherwise came by as well. And it was great to see them and have them part of the ceremony. As Dr. Adley rightly pointed out, we needed to focus some on them, and everybody had a good time. So a real positive ceremony, so thank you. Let's see, Mr. Burke?
Light review next meets on September 11th. So I will have a report at our following selectman meeting.
Okay, terrific. Very good, Monica?
Great Island is meeting on Wednesday, and I just, I want to get people interested in paying attention and maybe joining us for the meeting. So this will be Reed Hildebrand's second presentation to the committee. They will be discussing, we'll be discussing access, infrastructure, ecology, architecture, activation and governance, and outreach. And they'll have people from Reed and from their entire team speaking to these different categories. So that outreach is particularly exciting right now. We will be looking at our social media effort, the first survey that we're going to do. But even more importantly, I'm asking everybody to put a save the date on their calendar for September 21st. This will be our first community outreach event, and we're in the final stages of planning this. But right now, it looks like we'll have two sessions. So one session will be in Town Hall, and that'll be in the morning. And it'll be a little bit shorter for people that maybe are a little time constrained. And the second session will happen in the afternoon on Great Island. And that will include a presentation introducing the team, the project schedule, and the overall goals. And then there will also be storyboards for people to walk around and give their thoughts. And we'll also have a variety of walks, including one kind of geared more towards kids. So this is a really, really good opportunity to get involved and let Reed Hildebrand and the committee know what you want to see out there. So please, put it on your schedule and join us then. I want to just say one last thing about infrastructure. We did accept a bid for the widening of the road, and that work should be starting sometime in mid-September, and it should conclude by year-end as far as the road work goes. So just a refresher, though, that while we're doing that work, the pedestrian traffic will not be allowed Monday through Friday. So the island will be open to our residents on the weekends. So just put that in the back of your mind. So meeting is tomorrow, but please put September 21st on your calendar. Thanks.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Let's see, Kate, any public comments?
No.
Okay. That's a new business to take care of before we get to year-end transfers. So our first order of business is to discuss and take action to accept anticipated donations of up to $150,000 to the Beautification Adopt a Garden program. Kate?
I believe you have Alicia Pepperone from Beautification here to speak to that.
Hi, Alicia.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. As Kate said, I'm Alicia Pepperone, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Darien Beautification Commission. Unable to join me tonight is our Chair, Sarah Schwartz. So I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for our commission to move forward with marketing and fundraising for the renamed Darien Blooms campaign to revitalize many of our town gardens. This is the program in town formerly known as the Adopt a Garden Program. Some of you guys may remember seeing small green Adopt a Garden signs in various locations around Darien. We have about 16 of those. This campaign will have no impact on the town's operating budget as we are seeking private donations from Darien businesses and residents. And just to give you some background for a few minutes, over the past two years, the Beautification Commission has been re-envisioning this former Adopt a Garden program. The program began about 13 years ago to allow approximately 16 parcels of town properties to be adopted by businesses. And in the previous business model, the assigned gardens would be planted and maintained by the businesses who were sponsoring them. In exchange for that, they got that green sign I mentioned, which gave them visibility in the community and marketing. These gardens are all located in well-traveled locations across town. Usually, they're found in major roadway islands, near schools, near our beaches, and underneath the Welcome to Darien signs. Over the past 13 years, these gardens have fallen into various stages of disrepair, and the Beautification Commission would like to see these gardens improved and up to our town's aesthetic standards. So a main goal of our program is its successful longevity, since this would be, you know, a relaunch of an existing program that did not, you know, last longer than about 10 years. The plants that we use need to be high-impact, yet low-maintenance possible, drought-tolerant, salt-tolerant, deer-tolerant, low in height, so as not to obstruct traffic, contain native plants, as well as fitting in with an overall coastal Connecticut aesthetic. We also need to know that the oversight is in the hands of one entity. The reason this program was really unsuccessful in the past was because the maintenance was dependent on numerous small business owners to take time out of their day and away from their business to maintain their gardens. We're also striving to get our town, another goal is we're striving to get our town in line with our neighboring towns' impressive beautification efforts, namely New Canaan and Stamford, and some great stuff that they have going on there. So we reached out to approximately 10 landscapers to see if they had interest in taking on this project, and only one expressed interest. That was Eastern Land Management. They're a large commercial landscaping business located in Stamford. They already have a contract with Baywater Properties. They've done a lot of impressive work for them, including everything you see around the new Corbin district so far. They also hold the contract for Stamford's downtown business district. If anyone's been by the new New Canaan Library, they did all of the landscaping outside of that, which looks fabulous. And then they also have contracts with some large corporations along Route 7 as well. So they're very experienced in commercial landscaping. They understand the task. And they created 16 individual proposals for our different gardens. The installation budget for each ranged, depending on size, anywhere from $1,000 to $3,000. They also priced out annual maintenance and watering for a three-year time period. So when Sarah and I rolled up all the numbers, the cost estimate for the three years totals $150,000. So using the previous Adopt a Garden model of having one business sponsor each individual garden would mean that an individual business would need to spend $8,000, which is obviously way too much for a small business. And we spoke to several community partners, such as the Chamber of Commerce, Baywater Properties, and some other small businesses in town to see what they thought about the pricing structure. And like I just mentioned, they answered that the total price was going to be way too costly for them. So we reconsidered how we could achieve our goal, and we met with a member of the Park and Rec Commission. And we thought that the model that they used to fundraise back in the day towards Weed Beach Playground by the Sound and as well as the walkway to the new Cherry Lawn Playground could be utilized to achieve our goal. So what that would look like for us would be if we were to use bricks as well. We would need, the price for bricks is about $250 for bricks, and we would need 600 individual, a combination of 600 individual people or businesses to purchase them. In downtown Darien, across from Mansfield Avenue, next to the Mechanic Street parking lot and the Darien Fire Department, there is a garden that is part of the Adopt a Garden portfolio, and it's in a big state of disrepair, and it needs a lot of masonry work. So one of our ideas was if we fundraised via the bricks, people who donated towards this campaign could have permanent recognition, you know, on the ground of that park. And Seasons 2 as well offered to donate a teak bench to us for that space. Let's see, so we're hopeful that you will approve our commission to move forward with our marketing and campaign. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, a couple of things, just in terms of next steps. It looks like this is a little bigger than simply accepting $150,000. I guess before I start that, I just want to applaud you and your commission colleagues for taking the initiative to pull together a proposal like this. I think beautification in town is extremely important. We get a lot of compliments on our hanging baskets, and it really makes a difference in terms of how the town looks. And I personally am really appreciative of that. But if I look at your possible next steps page, it looks like there may be, as I said, more to this than just accepting the request to approve up to, received up to $150,000 in donations. So for example, you kind of talk here about maybe setting up a nonprofit or having a process for selecting a couple of new committee members. In addition, there would be the ongoing maintenance cost of these gardens after the $150,000 is expended. And just having kind of an open discussion about that and giving us some time to process it, that would seem, in my mind, to make good sense. So personally, I'm not quite ready to vote to approve this. I think it's a tremendous idea. I may need just a little bit more time to ask some questions, talk to a few folks. I'd like to talk to the same folks over at Parks and Rec that you did and just make sure we've thought through some of the longer-term stuff that you have here, laid out here. Again, I think this could be a tremendous addition to the town's efforts at beautification, and I applaud this. But just given the number of things that you've contemplated and teed up in your possible next steps, I want to make sure, as a board, that we've had a chance to study that closely, talk to all the relevant people so that we can collectively make a really smart decision for the town that works both short and long term. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but other than to say that, I concur with what John says. I think this is a great start. I think we need to have a little bit more detail and information going forward to vote cogently to approve it. But I think it's a wonderful idea. I applaud the work that's been done already, and I look forward to hearing more.
Thank you.
Yeah, Alicia, I just want to say that this is such a great idea. And for you to put together a presentation like this, you and your team is fantastic. I know that the beautification, this has been something that the commission's been struggling with how to address. So I think that's, I think this is a really, really great start. Could I ask you, I'm going to end, I'm going to ask you the question now because I want you to think about it. How can we help you when it comes to the raising of the funds? That's my big question. But my medium question, I guess in importance, is how did you decide where to do the bricks? And did you consider bricks at each site, or was that just not feasible with planting?
Yeah, we thought about a lot of things. We also thought about having some sort of large sign that would list people's names who donated or organization or company names. One thing we looked at and kind of researched into was what the Darien Foundation did when they redid the turf fields at the high school. You know, there's a wall as you're walking in by the concession stands that lists people who donated towards that. The brick idea came to us because of this Mechanic Street location garden, where it needs, it's currently all paver stones, and it needs for safety issues to be pulled up. So we thought that could be a good fit for it. And, you know, we used to have the gardens individually signed, but we felt it would be, if we're not attaching a donation to a particular location, it would be hard to provide signage. And some of these gardens, there's just not space. Like, I know we all live all over different parts of town, but if you think of the one that's at Near Water and Post Road, like if you were going to turn down towards Henley or Weed Beach, there's a walkway that goes through it. I mean, that's a pretty compact little area. But we are definitely open to any other ideas. We just feel that recognition is a big draw for getting people to contribute, particularly businesses. So that was an idea that we had.
Okay, and you were kind of solving two problems with the masonry. Okay, terrific. All right, thank you.
Sarah, Marcy, anything for you guys?
I'd just like to say thank you for all of your work. It's a lot, and I really appreciate it. I think it will make the town look amazing. I know our residents really love the baskets that are hanging, and I think they really look forward to seeing these things around town. I agree that we should wait and determine the best way to move forward. I know that the Board of Education, whenever they accepted a gift that required annual maintenance going forward, you have to carefully think about the costs. And I think this is no different. So I appreciate all of the work that you've put in, and I look forward to seeing this put into place.
Thank you. And also, you know, just to let you guys know, every meeting, every month when we meet, one thing we talk about is how to do other projects outside of, you know, more living fragile things, such as plantings. And we were really excited to read about, I think it was John's idea about the bridge, you know, getting that painted and looking better as you come into town. So we're also happy to help with any projects like that that may, you know, we could be of assistance on.
Sure, I want to reiterate, hi, Alicia, nice to see you. You know, it's wonderful to see you, you know, rolling up your sleeves. We talked about you getting on this commission three years ago, and it seems like you've been a fantastic fit for it, so I appreciate your work. This has been a vision of yours for a long time, so it's nice to see it come to fruition. And definitely keep moving. I support this 100%. I think you're spot-on by saying that these gardens have become dilapidated over time and been neglected. And it certainly is apparent when you do run into our neighboring towns and see what they're doing. So I 100% agree with you, and I want to continue to push forward and close this so that going forward and next spring, we can have a plan and things are in place. So thank you for this work, and we'll keep hammering on it with you.
Thank you, and totally agree. You know, like I mentioned, this program first started in 2011, and it had a version then, and then they redid it. We don't even have a date on it of record, but a few years later, they tried to relaunch it again with a different model. And in that one, at one point in time, they were having commission members on beautification, you know, go out and read and maintain the gardens, and it just wasn't feasible. So like you all are saying, one of our main goals, too, is to make this work beyond the three years and into the future.
Yeah, no, just reiterate my thanks and all the thanks that have been offered up here tonight. We really appreciate this work, like nearly everyone involved in town government. It's volunteer work, and it comes out of nights, weekends, and family time. So we appreciate your efforts and kind of the whole commission. We'll keep this on the front burner. So if we can get through some of our due diligence and questions, we'll try to get this addressed sometime at one of our September meetings and keep this moving ahead. But thanks for your patience in letting us kind of work through some details, and we will pick it up forthwith.
Thank you. So for next steps, would it be hearing back from someone with questions in about a month? Or how does that work?
We will actually move more quickly than that. I've got some notes here from this discussion. So what I want to do is have a couple of quick internal conversations, then I will drop you. And Sarah, or your chair, Sarah's a quick note, just summarizing a few questions that we've got and just next steps on some additional conversations. Like I said, I want to really focus on that next steps page and make sure we're all aligned on some of the implications of that.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
Bye. Okay. Next up, discuss and take action on a request to amend the town Darien Code Red policy.
Okay. This was a project undertaken by Marley Hayes, our Media Relations Manager. Our Code Red policy was virtually not much of a policy. So she worked with Mark McEwen, our Emergency Services Director, and with you, John, and with the Chief of Police to develop this policy that you have sitting before you. So we're asking for the board to adopt that policy.
Yeah, so as Kate said, it's been syndicated with everybody. I'm comfortable with this language. It really just, to summarize what it does, it clarifies that our Code Red emergency system is really just for emergencies and not for general announcements. It says that it should be used in conjunction with our other avenues and venues for notifying folks in the event of an emergency. It specifies that the users of the system are the First Selectmen Police Chief and our Emergency Management Director, Mark McEwen. And then finally, it just admonishes folks that when you do get any type of notification, whether it's Code Red or something else, details matter. And in a short, quick notification, details are invariably lacking. And so encourages people that think they may be affected by a Code Red announcement to get more specific details about what to do next to protect themselves, their families, or their property. So I think this is a reasonable update, and it's got input from all the right folks, and I would vote, I would recommend approval. Any questions? Okay, motion to approve the updated emergency notification system policy for Code Red. The mic moves, and Marcy seconds, all in favor? Okay, great, thank you. All right. Next step is discuss and take action on a request to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the local bridge program supplemental application and any associated agreements. Kate?
Ed is here, and I would defer to him to explain.
Mr. Gentile?
Maybe he doesn't want to.
He's being shy.
Okay.
Kate, do you have a sense of why he needs this?
This is a typical thing. Actually, a lot of times, we're asking for permission to have the First Selectmen sign it. But in this instance, there we go. Ed?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, sorry about that. Problem with the computer. Yeah, normally, it's the, we ask for the First Selectmen to do it. They've given us permission, we've done in the past, to have the Director of Public Works sign off on these. It's just a resolution for us to move forward with the funding. There'll be more of these coming down as we get to reimbursements towards the end of this. So for continuity, I'm more than willing to do it if you folks believe it's a proper process to follow.
I think that's fine. Is there anything that we need to look at in advance of you signing one of these? Or are these all really internal approvals that wouldn't sort of rise to meriting or a Board of Selectmen review?
I think you hit it on the head. It's the internal stuff, internal reviews by the DOT, Bridge Section, and the funding part, making sure that we follow all the proper procedures for the DOT, CHRO requirements, set-asides, things like that. So as we got our new budget and we had our approved low bidder, they needed to approve all of that going forward, and this document allowed us to do that.
Got it, okay. I'm okay with this. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gentile?
Nope.
Okay. No questions, okay. Motion to approve granting Ed the authority or granting the Director of Public Works to sign the local bridge program supplemental application and associated agreements.
I'll move.
The mic moves. Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay, Ed, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. Next item, discuss and take action on a request to reallocate certain appropriations within the ARPA Fund and the Reserve Fund for capital and non-recurring expenditures. Kate?
So as you know, we have until the end of this calendar year to commit all of our funds. And as far as the federal government is concerned, committing means contracts signed, purchase orders issued. It's not just appropriating the funds. So with some of our projects, they're moving slower than we would have liked, or we've had difficulty actually getting a vendor. So what we're proposing is to do a little bit of a swap, move some of the things out of ARPA that are going to take us longer to get moving on, and move some things that are currently in the Reserve Fund that we either have a vendor ready to go or we will be able to move on quickly and move those into ARPA. So you see, we're swapping out the repointing of the brick in Ron Heights for some hose, fire hose, for a mower, I believe. Unfortunately, I don't have the agenda in front of me, the backup. But that's all we're doing, is making a swap. And there will be more reallocation proposals coming forward over the next couple of months. And there will be more reallocation proposals coming forward over the next couple of months.
My question is that the swapping out, that's permitted under the the statute or under the authorization, right?
Oh, yeah, that's that's perfectly allowable.
Okay.
Kate, the amounts haven't changed, correct?
No, they have not changed.
Okay. My question for me is there is a board of finance reserve amount on here that's taking $10,500 out of the board of finance reserve. Um, if these are just sort of ARPA reallocations, what is that?
Um, just a second, let me, I'm
Because because what, and because the other thing is more generally, it looks like there's 30,000 taken out of hose replacement, another 20,000, another 10,000 and another $10,500 taken out of the board of finance reserve. And then those same amounts are being put back into hose replacement, hose replacement, all of that.
No, so we're we're actually so right. So we're moving we're taking leftover balances from the town signage, the auditorium room upgrades and renovation of 206 and the joint mortar repair. Those are either projects we can't get going or balances that we can, um, we know we're good to go with. So we're moving all that into the reserve fund. But in order to fund all the reserve fund things, we want to move into ARPA. It looks like we're moving that $10,000 out of basically the contingency account. And and that, yeah, we're taking that out to make up the joint mortar repair, make that all whole in the reserve fund.
Yeah, because because I mean, if you look at the not to nitpick this, I didn't have a chance to discuss it with you today, but and just to pick on one thing. So it says here, Parks and Rec stand on blower. Current budget, $6,500.
$16,000.
$16,500. So we're going to take out $16,500 and drop that account to zero on the front page, right?
Yep.
Then on the very next page, it says same thing, P and R stand blower. And it says we're going to transfer $16,500 into that same account with the same account name.
Okay, but so those on the second page, those first four, the hose, the two hose accounts, the thermal camera and the stand on blower, those are going from the reserve fund into ARPA.
So these funds are actually sitting in a reserve.
They're sitting, yes.
And now you're dumping them into ARPA. They still have the same labeling, but they can be repurposed.
Yes.
Fine.
And then we're moving those other things into the reserve fund to fund um, primarily the joint and mortar repair.
Okay.
It's complicated accounting, um.
It is. Just just to stress again, um, I don't want any lose any ARPA funding. And that's job one. So I don't care. We have to spend it on an invoice that comes in at the end of the year. It's very important that we don't lose any of those funds.
Right. And Jen and I have been working on that and um, just today we discussed we kind of need to come up with a drop dead date that um, in advance of the end of the calendar year. I don't think you want to be sitting there on December 1st and saying, oh, my gosh, we've got $100,000 that we need to spend out of ARPA. How can we do it? So um, I think, you know, maybe the two of us will meet with you and we'll come up with a um further plan.
Yeah, why don't we just pick a date now? I'd vote for October 1st. I guess everybody, um, kind of five weeks, they're all on notice. If it is not October 1st, we got a week to hear appeals. But otherwise, if you have not committed those funds, they all get stripped out during a board meeting in October and that still gives us kind of 60 days. Uh, they can do account holidays and everything else to find someplace to put the funds. Because even if we set it for November 1st, you've got Thanksgiving, we got Christmas, we don't have as much time as you think. So I'd I'd recommend a drop dead of October 1st and everybody has to have on paper committed funds or they lose them.
I think that works.
Okay, any objection? Okay. All right, why don't we do that? Any questions for Kate on this, these transfers or uh, the October 1st in general? Okay, motion to approve the ARPA related transfers as presented.
I move.
Okay, Mike moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor? Okay, thank you, Kate. All right. Last new business item, discuss and take action on a request for an appropriation and bond authorization for repair of Gorms Pond Dam, amount of $3,345,900. Kate.
Okay, well, this is the funding portion of the Gorms Pond Dam repair, which will be largely funded by a um FEMA grant, but we still, as with everything, in order to spend it, we have to um appropriate it. Um, not just our share, but we have to appropriate the full amount. And Ed can give you any more color that you need.
All right, um, thank you. Um, is there a way to let Darren in so we can speak?
Where'd he go? Oh, yeah.
I had trouble unlocking myself before. There he goes.
Okay.
There you go. He's going to speak to you on this topic. Go ahead, Darren.
You want a background?
I want you to give him the layout, please.
Okay, September 1st, there was a major storm, Ida. It damaged the dam. It happened to be low tide, so when the water went over the dam, it extremely scoured the face of the dam, exposing the soft core, which made it glacial till. So without the rock armoring, it left the dam exposed to further damage from the ebb and flow of the tide. Uh, we immediately hired an engineer to evaluate it and assist us with uh, seeking FEMA funding. And um, in the meantime, we also uh, on April of 2022 went and obtained emergency authorization to affect temporary repairs to the dam, which uh, involves some installation of filter fabric and uh, some stone ballast to reinforce the face of the dam and keep it from eroding further. In the meantime, we went after a final design, which we did with our consultant. And um, sought and received uh, all the state and federal permits from the DEEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, we bid out the project and see 5/13th, May 13th, we received bids, a bid to do the work. And that's where we are. We continue to seek FEMA funding. As Ms. Bush mentioned, the funding, we have to fully fund the project in order to be considered for FEMA reimbursement and there are no guarantees. But we continue to seek 100% reimbursement from FEMA.
Okay, thank you for that overview. This project has been percolating for a while and we've had a chance to look at it in some detail. In addition, behind the bond resolution, if you had a chance to read it as an executive summary that describes um the proposed work and where we are in the process. So I'm uh, certainly in favor of moving forward. Does anyone have any questions?
This, uh, is it common to get 100% reimbursement back from FEMA? Or is that like a a tall order?
Um.
On a project?
I I can only tell you what we've been told. And that is um yes, we are going to fund this. And we said, could we have that in writing? Can we have a commitment to fund letter? No, you can't. So it's it's really unfortunate and um I I without painting a a negative picture, but to give you an accurate um picture, an accurate answer to your question. We've had multiple meetings with them in person on the phone, actually in the field um, with tape measures out and meeting with people who don't even live in the state, who came from very far away. Um, and the process uh, is long and convoluted. So you go from one department and when they finish reviewing it, they pass the baton to another department. And it requires us to continually um, be asking questions. Where are we? What else can we do? Did we answer all your questions? Is there something you're waiting for from us? And at the end of their review, they'll, they may take a a couple of months to review for this one section to review our information. And then they'll say, okay, we need all this information, have it to us by Tuesday. So they'll take a couple of months to review something and and then we have a couple of days to respond. But we do, um, because they have the carrot.
Of course, I trust that you guys do. Um, other question is, can we start the work before uh, we get approval on a FEMA grant? And is this contractor ready to start this work ASAP?
As a matter of fact, um, not only can we start the work before we get the FEMA grant, um, we have to.
Have to, okay.
They will, they won't even consider reimbursing us until all of the work is done, all of the costs are known and they can audit everything.
Okay.
That all remains to be seen.
Now, are they, is the contractor ready to start this soon?
Interestingly, um, we we bid this in May. And um, trying to push things along, um, here we are. And we'll go to the board of finance tomorrow. And we've kept the contractor apprised because uh, he has every right to walk out of the
Yep.
his bid after you know, 30 days, 60 days. Um, we have every indication that this contractor is interested in partnering with us on this project. Every conversation that we've had, he's consistently said, no, we're going to work this in. Um, it it'll work out well. We have, we're big enough. We have other jobs. We can move things around. When you guys are ready, we'll be here.
Right. Good news. Thank you so much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, Darren, I would kind of second what Marcy was saying about the uh, the FEMA funding and I'm uh, I was really um happy to see that you have funds allocated to um, to pursuing that because I think that's $60,000. That's well spent. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed. Work definitely needs to get done. Anyone else have questions?
Hey Jen, I have one for you. I know board of finance will decide, but is this um um, assuming that we don't get FEMA funding, would this be a 30-year bond? I know board of finance decides, but.
30-year bond. That's a good question. I think the answer is yes. Kate, do you know that?
Um. I think the answer is what Monica said. It's up to the board of finance.
Well, no, I mean
Could it be?
Could they pick a duration of that? I think they can.
Um, honestly, I am not up on all those rules anymore. Um. So I can't tell you whether or not I think it could be.
Okay, uh, it certainly would be something they would consider uh, when they make that bonding decision. That's a great question, Monica. I'm not I haven't looked at those rules in a while myself.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. Motion to approve uh, the request for an appropriation and bond authorization for the repair of Gorms Pond Dam in the amount of $3,345,900 and to recommend that approval to the board of finance.
I'll move.
Monica moves. Marcy second, all in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So now we have a bunch of transfers. Um, Kate, are all these transfers for fiscal '24 or nothing in '25, I take it?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, I believe they are all '24.
All right, I uh, checked briefly with Jennifer today and she says none of these are controversial, so hopefully this will be relatively quick. Um, Kate, let's uh, get started. First one, discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $113,000 to accrued leave redemption.
Well, um, when people terminate, um, they are entitled to um certain amount of, a certain percentage of their sick time if they um, were hired prior to a certain date and to um to vacation payout and in some cases compensated um, compensatory time payout as well. So we do budget for that um, every year. Um, and we had budgeted a little bit more in fiscal '24 anticipating that the chief was going to retire. And in case you didn't know, he never took a sick day in 40 years. But the payout was still higher than we anticipated. It wasn't just him. There were other employees involved.
Okay. Uh, it looks like there's money in these other accounts to cover it. So motion to approve the transfer related to accrued leave redemption. Okay, Marcy moves. Second. Marcy, Mark, Mike seconds, all in favor? Great, thanks. Okay, next up, discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $36,732 to property and crime insurance.
So the majority of this is just reallocating money within our um, risk management accounts and we actually we have done this every year. Um, we actually get a lump sum, but we um bill from the insurance um, group. And then we allocate it out. So going forward, we're not going to be doing that anymore. We're splitting it just into liability and into workers' comp. But so this is really rejiggering that budget.
Okay, questions? Motion to approve transfer of $36,732 to general property and crime insurance. Okay, Sarah moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor? Okay. Next one up, transfer of $995 to senior transportation part-time salary.
Well, it just ran over budget a slight amount. It's got to come before the two boards because the source of the funding is not from within the budget. Not from within the at-home in Darien budget.
Got it. Okay, questions? Motion to approve this transfer. Sarah moves, Mike second, all in favor? Okay. Next up, a transfer of $11,923 to Beach and Court seasonal and temporary.
And we did this last, at the last meeting, or you did at the last.
Sorry, so this one, we don't have to take action to that. Got it.
Right.
Great, we covered that one. Next one, transfer of $654 to probate printing.
Um, so we share the cost of probate with New Canaan. Um, we are obligated to pay for their office supplies, anything to do with the running of the office. We don't pay for their salaries. Um, but we pay for the things they need to run the office. Um, so it's slightly higher than the budget um, this year. And again, the source of funding is not from within the probate budget, which is why such a small amount is coming before you.
Got it. Motion to approve? Mike moves, Marcy second, all in favor? Okay. Transfer of 100, or sorry, uh, transfer of $6,035 to copier equipment lease.
So we um, entered into a new lease in the last fiscal year and what we did was we combined the maintenance of the printers with the um copier lease, so um, and supply. So we had um, the budget was in a lot of different places and we need to basically move that all into the copy equipment um, line.
Okay, motion to approve this transfer of $6,035. Sarah moves. Uh, Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay. Next up, um, transfer of $182,000, $182,575 to various police department overtime accounts.
We have Captain Mastriani with us, so I'm going to ask him to handle this one.
Yes, sir. Captain, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Zagrasky. Thank you, uh, Ms. Bush and uh, board members. So I'm respectfully requesting this transfer. Um, it appears that um, I need to address these deficits. I have two overtime accounts, ones for patrol and the other one is for our communications with our dispatchers. Um, this is mainly because of staffing shortages we experienced pretty much throughout the entire fiscal year. Um, there were some things such as uh, injury leave, extended sick time. Multiple officers were on that type of leave. Uh, we had a few resignations, both at patrol and in dispatch. And we had a couple of new hires that required uh, basic training at the police academy. Uh, and that takes about eight months to get through that in FTO. Uh, so needless to say, there were a abundance of shift vacancies for patrol uh, throughout the year. Um, a lot of these shifts um, were required to be filled, usually due to some sort of contractual obligation. So during the year, it added up. Um, unfortunately it uh, caused a little damage on those accounts and I'm looking to uh, transfer funds. We have one in particular, which is our communications full-time salary. Um, they're supposed to have nine Um, they're supposed to have nine dispatchers at full strength. They've been running with pretty much seven uh, for most of the fiscal year. So the good news with that is you have uh, two full-time salaries that went unspent. So we have funds available for that. Um, we did hire a couple of new dispatchers. Unfortunately, it didn't work out. Uh, one did not respond well to training and, and had to resign. Uh, we had a second dispatcher. Um, there were some personal matters she had to attend to. And as a result, it was affecting her employment and she had to resign. So unfortunately, not much success in retaining some of those new hires. But like I said, the flip side is we do have some unspent funding um, due to the full-time salaries. Um, there's a few other accounts as well that we ended the year um, in a surplus. Some of this has to do with the um, the full-time salaries. So holiday pay, for instance, in communications, because we basically had two vacancies. That's um, two salaries of holiday pay that went unspent. Our patrol holiday pay. Uh, officers have the option to get payout in lieu of time off. Uh, it turns out most officers, it looks like they opted for, for time off. Um, which ended the, the uh, the fiscal year in a surplus for that particular account. Our uh, training division, which is a professional standards account, we ended with a surplus. We typically budget for four academy seats every year. Uh, each seat is approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, we only had to send two of the new hires to the academy. So we had some leftover funding there. Um, and then surprisingly, our station operations electricity. Um, we had a good amount left over with that. I, I'd imagine that's due to decreased rates from, from the power company. Um.
Or the fact that your air conditioner wasn't working.
Yeah, well, well, that too. Some of the equipment.
Who's the administrative captain again? Oh, I'm sorry. Just, just checking.
Um, but that, that basically sums it up.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that thorough uh, explanation. Anybody have any questions for the captain?
Quick uh, question for me, Captain. Thank you for the presentation. Have the sick leave issues, have they resolved?
Um, there were a, a couple of officers who sustained injuries off duty. It, it wasn't for a very long period of time that they were out of the schedule, so that, that resolved itself. Um, we had a uh, a few uh, injury leave. Um, one in particular has not resolved. We had an officer who's been out since August of two thousand twenty-three and is still currently out. So um, she was out for pretty much all of the fiscal year. Um, but the other officers that are at our injury leave, yes, that, that all resolved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, other questions for the captain?
No, I just wanted to say that electricity number jumped out at me too. It's hard to believe that there was a, what, a thirty percent drop? In that amount? Um, so wa- was it, was it a change in rates or was it? I know you had problems with the air conditioning, but I'm not sure that could generate thirty-four thousand dollars in savings.
I, I think to be fair to Andrew, this is, he's only taken over as the um, administrative captain, so he may not have the history on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did ask around and that, that's as far as I got, was a, a decrease in rates.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve one hundred eighty-two, two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in police-related transfers.
I'll move.
Monica seconds, all in favor? Great, thank you. Captain, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Who was the motion there?
Uh, Mike move, Monica second.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Okay, discuss and take action on a request from the registrars of voters for an intra-department transfer of thirteen thousand, two hundred and one dollars. I think we have Kara Cately here this evening.
Yep.
Kara, how are you?
Hi, good, uh, good evening, everyone. I'm fine, thank you. I mean, I, I'm just here if you guys have any questions. It's an intra-department transfer. Um, but obviously it is money that's being transferred, so I'm here, happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
So this, this pertains to the additional expense of the um, extended voting and all of that, as, and the staffing of all that, is that where this is going?
Partially. Um, we budgeted for one election, um, but there were two elections. There was the November election and also the presidential preference primary, which then became additionally um, had additional um, staffing and payroll expenses due to the um, passage and immediate effectiveness of early voting. So even if we had budgeted for the second electoral event, the presidential preference primary, there would have been no way to budget for early voting. Um, because we didn't know it was gonna pass. We didn't know what it was gonna look like and there was really no certainty around it. Um, that was four days. We did receive the grant from the state, as did all towns. It was a uniform grant of ten thousand, five hundred dollars regardless of size of town or municipality, which obviously benefited some of us who were smaller and probably disadvantaged on larger cities. Um, so we were able to use some of that grant for the required equipment that we needed, additional laptops, scanners, um, label printers, um, things like that. And then we used um, the remainder that we don't need for um, technology and equipment uh, for part of the staffing overages. And then we transferred the rest from an account for professional services. Um, that we think was over because things were still getting labeled as programming expenses when they were really related to programming memory cards, which is probably more likely properly put in program expenses. So I think we had two accounts. Um, going towards the same set of activities which led to an overage in professional services. Um, so we'll work out that budgeting issue ongoing. Um, and then we'll have to work on increasing our staffing budgets, given um, the seven and fourteen days of early voting.
Very clear. Thank you. Any questions for Kara? Okay, motion to approve the voter registrar transfer of thirteen thousand, two hundred and one dollars. Uh, Marcy moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Okay, Kara, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone.
Take care. Okay, next one up, uh, request for a transfer of five thousand, sixty-eight dollars for public works, motor fuel and lubricants. Mr. Jennings.
Good evening. Um,
Can I interrupt?
Yes, sure, please.
Um, John, would you like Ed to explain all of them at once? You could vote on all of the public works as one thing if you like.
Love it. Ed, please do.
Okay. Give it my, give it my best shot. The uh, I go with the first one, um, fourteen, that is a transfer uh, to motor fuels and lubricants. We did have a small uptick in the unit cost. Um, and actually fuel usage this past year. So you see, I had a shortfall in that, which I covered through um, for three other depart, um, three other inner operation department chain, um, transfers, as a matter of fact, three different accounts.
Okay.
Um, please just stop me if you need more information on any of these as I go through them.
Okay, next up?
Okay, um, the next one up is number fifteen. Um, transfer to the facility maintenance and repair account for our DPW garage. What I did note, I, I had to spend a little bit over my budget to take care of um, the uh, entrance to the swap shop area. That was basically the, the item that kind of put me over. Um, we did take the money from our hazardous waste disposal. I did have some extra money there. Overtime account in our facility maintenance and repair account for the um, the waste management area.
Yeah, kudos, by the way. All that screening thing seems to have had the desired effect, so thank you. It looked, yeah, really great.
Looks a little better than a fence, I think.
It looks less better than a fence. Okay, next.
Um, next one is the uh, is the big one. Um, it's got a little backstory to it, so I'm gonna take a little bit of time on this one. Um, as you see, I, I've used numerous accounts to get caught up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollar shortfall. Um, in my budget, uh, my MSW anticipated tonnage for the year was about thirty-four thousand. This is what I set aside budget-wise. Also, the same number I used to generate the revenue for this um, past fiscal year. What we ended up with was about fifty-one hundred tons of MSW coming into our facility and had to be hauled out. That's the two hundred thousand dollar hit that we took. Um, but we also got it back on the revenue side. Um, as I, as you see, I mentioned in the description below. Um, our revenues have now been above three hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, above what I had projected. So not even covering our shortfall, but actually making an additional hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That makes sense, everyone?
Which is phenomenal.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. Um, but you see, my, with my overall budget, the last transfer on this item is the Board of Finance contingency. Um, I ran over my budget, my overall budget, the four point five million dollars by about seventeen grand because of this one item. Just wanted to point that out.
Hmm, so we had a twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in higher expenses, but fortunately, lower expenses in other areas almost that much money, but seventeen thousand dollars short. But the good news is you made three hundred thousand dollars more in revenue than what you budgeted, correct?
Correct.
That's great.
Made uh, Jen Charneski pretty happy. Let's see. Um, it is. Uh, next one we have up is the um, facility maintenance repair for the um, the buildings. Um, Town Hall and our uh, seven oh one Boston Post Road. Um, we ran into a little issue in this building with uh, boilers, one boiler in the wintertime and one of the AC units up on the roof here. Um, I know you folks had approved the capital repair, but what goes into getting that capital where it is and the, the the unit's still running is the fact that I had to put money into um, a vendor coming out and working on the systems. Um, that's, that ends up driving me over on this facility maintenance and repair account.
Okay, next up?
Next one. Oops. The, this is a thirteen thousand in professional services. This is the credit card charges that we accrue. Um, for uh, our charging of the um, dump stickers when they're purchased, as well as payments by the haulers when they're paying their monthly invoices.
Ed, does that um, tie to the fact that the increased dumping?
Um, not uh, not as much as you would, not as much as you would think, but yes, it does. That the haulers bring the garbage in and we're charging, we're charging them directly. Um, they are, they have been now for almost a year being able to pay their invoice um, with a credit card in lieu of having to drop off checks or cash here to us in the shop to get off the, the waitlist. So um, they, they've been in favor for the last couple of years. I've been able to implement, implement it. Um, uh, here, just uh, just under a year now. So it's, it's actually turning out well, but as you see, there's a, a charge that goes along with using that, that credit card.
Just a quick question on that. We don't charge them the upgrade of three percent or whatever we get from the credit card company charge. So we take that, okay?
No, we do not. Not at this time.
And it's, I mean, I, I would assume that the convenience of being able to pay by credit card and the instant payment, it probably outweighs the cost of the thirteen thousand. Um, rather than having to hold somebody's debt for a month's time or whatever it may be.
Correct. It, it does get us caught up quicker, but I, I actually think it's the, the benefit to the hauler also, or coming in. Um, uh, the folks online that get to buy online, they use their credit cards online. Um, when they dump the, buy the dump stickers, that also is a benefit. Um, but uh, as, as of right now, there is no chargeback for the use of the credit card um, in my department.
We uh, we, we set a threshold for that for people paying their property taxes, that sort of thing. So you can't go out and pay twenty thousand dollars in property taxes with a credit card and then incur some fee for, for doing that. But what have we done there? Do you recall the limits that were put in place?
No, there's no limit. They pay a percentage of um, if they're paying by credit percentage of the amount they're paying for the taxes. If they're using a um, basically an ACH, it's a flat dollar fee. But it doesn't matter.
Just for property taxes. It doesn't matter what, what the amount is. Okay. We ought to think about that more broadly. I know Jack Davis and others have uh, pushed on this notion of how do we think about charging for that sort of thing? We want to encourage use of credit card, credit cards for convenience and all that, and that's why a lot of people want to pay for things. At the same time, we gotta be eyes open about those bank charges. They're not going down anytime soon, so there may be some value in kind of re, the, the size of this transfer maybe suggests that we ought to reopen that discussion, so.
Well, I can tell you, just in my operating budget between parking and waste management, the um, total credit card charges are just above twenty thousand dollars uh, yearly.
Okay. Not devastating, but if, if we did an analysis or refresh that analysis across departments, it's non-revealed, so. Okay.
All right. Uh, number nineteen, motorized equipment. This, this is the, I have a problem with this account just about every year and it comes down to um, being able to get parts and pay for parts. Uh, right now, the cost for just standardized parts for vehicles has just about doubled. Um, from simple brake changes, oil changes, um, uh, tires, you saw on my other, and on one of the accounts I have coming up next. Um, everything seems to be, ever since COVID, getting it delivered, more expensive to, to purchase it. So you're gonna see a little uptick in my um, my next uh, budget uh, request coming in December. Um, on this line item right here.
Okay, and your last one?
Last one is tires. Um, my favorite topic is tires and loaders. Um, we blew out two tires on our loader this past year. Um, one of the reasons that we're up uh, over eight thousand dollars, just in tire purchases. Um, one of the, one of the downsides of loaders is you can't move it after it's done. I actually have to bring a wrecker in to move the thing so that we can actually work on it. So a little expensive when they blow. Um, that was the main uh, cost of, for my overage on this account right here.
Okay, I'll leave it to someone with psychological training to inquire as to why tires and loaders are on your list of favorite topics, but God bless.
Hey, Ed, I have, I have a question on this one. So you are, it looks like you're clearing out your snow removal services. You took some money uh, for motor veal, for motor fuel and you took some money for tires. So is it, is it correct to say that the new new balance is actually zero? If you look at, if you look at the two of them, you just have the transfer and the new balance um, reversed.
Mm-hmm.
So what is your new balance after these two transactions?
I, I will tell you, I had a little help on putting that part of this together going forward, so I, I, it looks like they add up to sixty-eight hundred available.
Right.
And there's probably another item that this snow removal service is under. That twelve hundred and seventy is attributed to another shortfall in one of the um, other accounts that we were just, we just reviewed.
So you have a transfer.
It was up, it was, she, one of the other ones, the motor fuel lubricants, you took twelve seventy out of that account.
Yeah, those two together at six eighty to zero the accountant.
Okay, so your new balance, your new new balance after tonight is zero.
It'll be zero, yeah. Zeroed out all the, the accounts that had uh, um, surplus of funds in it.
Yeah, taking into account all of tonight's transfers, right.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim went over all of those and helped that one.
Okay.
Okay. Questions on any of the transfers Ed has discussed? Okay, motion to approve all of the public works transfers as described.
I'll move.
Okay, Monica moves, Mike second, all in favor? Ed, thank you very much. That's great.
If, if I may add just one thing, um, I know you talked to uh, Captain Mastriana, uh, second go of electric and heating. He was uh, he was well informed. Um, the cost of heating fuel and electricity had gone down. That's why you'll see some of the transfers that we just went through. I had surplus funds in both of those accounts. So the anticipating budget I did over a year and a half ago, thinking that the prices would hold, the actual prices did come down. That's why there was uh, surplus funds involved and then the police department also.
Got it.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, folks.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You have a good night.
All right, adios. Okay, last couple items up here are review of minutes from our two regular meetings on July twenty-third and August fifth. I've taken a look at these and I'm okay with that. I think the my small one is board liaison reports on July twenty-third. Ms. Menick report on the kids in crisis summit. Other than that, that's an off-site manner correction, but anyone else any corrections for any of the minutes? Okay, motion to approve the minutes. the minutes as edited for July 23rd and as presented for August 5th. Okay, Mike moves. Marcy second, all in favor? Perfect, thank you. All right, agenda review. Anyone have anything for our upcoming agendas? I did want to report there that we've slowed a bit on some of our appointments. It's only because the block of three that I've got teed up, which I've misplaced, but it's sustainability, beautification and EPC. I've just had a little trouble getting the nominees from the Democratic and Republican town committees. We're not quite cleaned up on that yet. I had hoped to discuss that today or get that in executive session, but I will strive to get that for September, so sorry for the delay, but I'm not quite getting what we need to have a complete set of candidates to, to discuss. There's still some holes in those commissions, so we're not quite ready. Next up will be Darien Housing Authority. I'd like to cover that one as well. Joe Warren is, is back and better, so that's good news, but we do need to address that, that commission next. So more to come. Thanks for your patience. If nothing else for agenda review, our next meeting is September 9th and we'll be ready to go for that. Eric, nothing else? Can I get a motion? Monica, please.
Hey, John, so are you thinking about remote going forward, the second meeting of each month?
Yes, that's what I'm going to try to do is go back to that one-on-one-off in terms of in-person, remote. We still have a lot of appointments, excuse me, to work through. And if I can get those three straightened out in time for our second meeting in September, so whatever that second one is after the 9th, we'll make that one, that one will be virtual.
Okay.
We'll, I'll keep everybody apprised on that. As long as this cadence kind of works with you guys. It seems to work to have one of these meetings virtual and maybe even after our appointments, we might consider doing more of that, just for the sake of convenience.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, friends. Motion to adjourn, please?
I'll move.
Monica moves. Marcy second, all in favor? Great, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.